Bomb every now and then to.
So why? Don't feel bad.
That happens.
It's just habit for me.
Guess we must be about like ESPN two, right?
Right.
Alright, so I'm going to.
I'm looking at this, looking at all the info that's on here Kurt. I feel like I'm watching like basketball, like on the TV that you can get like a lot of games on.
It's kinda like.
I I'm just sitting here looking at.
Kinda like being in the beat ups.
I know. It is six o'clock.
Nah, not really. Nope. Clock behind you, you got a minute.
That analog was right.
That's crazy.
Weird.
Weird. So I'm gonna say, have you guys signed everything and sent it back my way?
Right there, right on, Phil.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, six o'clock, you got that?
Yup.
Alright, it's six o'clock, we'll go ahead and get the uh November Town Council meeting for the town of Wingate underway. Uh roll call, Kyle Campbell.
Yeah.
Kurt Hadley.
Present.
And Andrew Lorenz is present. Uh this evening, we're gonna do a cons- a consent agenda covering the minutes from the October fourteenth meeting and financial reports, our fund report, appropriation report, revenue report, October bank statement and bank reconciliation, our accounts payable docket dated November eleventh, twenty twenty five, and the utility adjustments. Do we have a a motion to accept them?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Now we open the floor for public comments for anybody that is here that has anything they wish to speak about that is not on the agenda. Alright, we will move forward with the department reports, park advisory report, board report, building project update.
Never too much.
Never too much?
Never too much.
There's a copy of Biddle's uh check register. And I added some comments at the bottom and some other items.
So these, this is a register of all of the checks that he's cut?
Checks and these are payments that he's made.
Okay, so I mean, one of the things that I'm gonna ask for Phil, and I know, I know I made this comment directly to Jim, but I don't know if it necessarily stuck. This is, this is great detail to see, but what we need to see is the invoices behind every one of these payments.
Well, I guess how much of the fund is why you need to see his invoices?
It's part of the requirement that we talked about early on in the project with this being a government funded project, and even if it wasn't, right, from the standpoint of from the standpoint of being a good steward of the town's dollars, we want to make sure that everything that's being brought forward matches what he's paying out. And, and I told Jim this early on, I said, Jim, it's not that I don't trust you. I said, but when it comes to dollars and cents on this project, we don't trust anybody.
Well, it almost sounds like you don't want him to make a money on the project.
Has nothing to do with.
He gave a bid of two hundred and ninety nine thousand.
Right.
It's all accounted for. It came out from the penny. I don't know, I just, if you're repairing a car, they're not gonna show me up to the cost of that thing.
No, but you're gonna see the markup, you're gonna, you're gonna know exactly what everything costs.
What's gonna cost me?
Yes.
It's not my business how much it costs me.
Yeah, well, I understand that, but I guess in the same, in the same respect, if somebody's building a building for you, or you're buying a house, or you're building a house, you need to know everything along the way.
Not necessarily. I agree on the price, which we agree to.
Again, we're gonna have to go back. We're gonna have to go back and look at the details of the grant, but Janet, I, I believe I'm correct that the grant really requires all of that detail.
So, early on in the process, and I don't know if you were in that phone call, Phil.
I was on the phone call.
Well, Joyce and Mark were on a phone call with Rose Scoville and the folks from I A D C, I E D C, and Chamber, and they actually uh provided um the requirements for procurement and invoices and evidence that the town would have to provide in order to be reimbursed. So I know that Kurt has been handling that process with Cory, and I think that's a collaboration, but that information, that was one of the earliest things. Do you remember that, Mark?
No. I remember talking to him.
Because I understand he had to talk to you that he needed a new voice from Biddle.
So that conversation that we had was related to, remember? He, we had been given a bill for, to FBI and Biddle, did not say anything about the town of Wingate. So my position on that was the town of Wingate cannot pay a bill to FBI or a bill to Biddle. So um.
Actually, they did. They actually wrote on checks. They wrote checks of a hundred fifty seven thousand.
So I'm sorry, because Suzie's not here and I don't write the checks, but that situation was specifically because Mr. Biddles, um, Mr. Biddle had provided a bill for us to pay FBI. And we couldn't do that, so that was why that day, I know it was a meeting day a couple months ago, and that was, that was quite a kind of an ordeal, just because he hadn't worked with local government, so. Uh but our position on that one was that we could not write a check to FBI. They were not our contract bond.
He wrote the check that FBI was trying to reduce costs. One hundred thirty one thousand. And I was going with Mark Mettle and his brother, another two thousand. We tracked the size of the debt.
Yeah, we were all, we were there, yeah.
By twenty thousand dollars cheaper, it got off.
Now, we did get a revised. We did get a revised invoice from FBI and from Jim on that, but there was never any detail of, you know, the size of the building that, any, any of the changes, so all we had were dollar figures. And again, I, I think one of the things.
Right here, decreased building length by sixteen foot was one hundred fifty three, four fifty eight, dropped it down to one thirty one, five eighty four for a total of one eight seventy four.
And that's the first time I've actually seen that in print.
Well, that's all mine.
Yeah, he said items changed during construction.
Well, and I think one of the things too, early on, Phil, I think in, in terms of the bid package, pretty sure the bid package called out the uh, the need for the, you know, details of all of the invoices as well. But we, we can go back and, and take a look at that, but I, I just wanna make sure that we have everything that we need, because my, one of my biggest concerns is if we don't and we close this out to Biddle construction, our ability to get any future grants may be severely hampered because they'll look at us and say, okay, you took the money, but you didn't give a good accounting of where it all went, other than you've got a building. And, and you know, my fear is that could hamper, you know, wouldn't you agree with that, Janet?
I think that because it's a federal grant, so um it doesn't look like it, but Ready one eighty is federal money, it was leftover COVID money that was distributed to the state of Indiana. They had two, actually three uh Ready grants. We were in the second one called Ready one eighty, which is the one that was administered through I A D C and Indy Chamber. It, the risk is always that if in audit, they choose to either through Cory Weitzel, who's reviewing everything now, um or through the officials above him, and or in audit, if they decide that they don't like this, our risk is that one, we could be required to pay it back, and two, would be at mark against us on future grants. Which is um.
I guess my thought though, if life ever did happen, so, you know, talking to John Frye, I made sure that we see this now, along with City of Commerce, Bill, they were almost paying these people the same.
They were, and I agree with that. Um however, um a lot of my units that receive other kinds of federal grants that were a result of COVID money have been asked to pay money back. So that was a different administration. That was once everything changed this January twentieth. The Treasury Department is behaving very differently, and they're being a lot more aggressive, and I'm just hoping that they never get aggressive enough to get down to our level.
Well, I'd say he can provide. He has nothing to hide. Her language he's done.
Sure.
And I don't wanna drag this on another month.
No, no, I mean, I, I wanna get it all closed out, because I think we should have that last bank deposit from the grant.
You have.
And we were sitting on that overage from the original FBI invoice versus, so based on all of that, we, again, outside of that invoice that he gave you, Phil, um, I show that we owe Biddle eleven thousand six eighty two twenty one. Now, I guess the other question, and, and again, Phil, if, if there are invoices behind that uh that invoice he gave you for forty three five ninety six, we need to see that.
Ten thousand over that twenty eleven. I dropped this check off to thirty four thousand.
Okay, so, but this check is a community foundation check, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have.
It's all going to pay the bill.
Well, exactly, but they're actually, they're treated differently, because one of them is Ready one eighty, and one of them is Community Foundation. Okay. So you were saying that, and I agree with you, there's eleven thousand some odd, six something left in the Ready Grant.
Yeah.
That you're expecting to have received from um I A D C or Indy Chamber?
And the, the remaining balance that we were receiving from them was uh sixty five ninety two forty two.
Have we got all the money?
Almost, but I don't understand the sixty five ninety two.
That was, so they had already submitted, um and we had received five thousand eighty five seventy nine of that eleven thousand six eighty two twenty one. So those two together made that eleven thousand six eighty two twenty one, and then with that twenty one eight seventy four that we have been in essence sitting on with shrinking of the size of the building, that brings us up to a thirty three five sixty two twenty one that we would be owed to Biddle.
If, if you would put that in um an email and then have, so our share, Suzie can cut that. So what we need to do is, so Phil, when did this check come in?
I picked it up October thirty first. I dropped it off.
So, okay, so it's not showing on here. It probably went in in November. This is the October bank statement. But.
If he picked it up on the thirty first and put it in.
Yeah, I put it in the same way.
It wouldn't have gone in until November.
So um is, there is a signed contract with Biddle somewhere?
Yeah, you got that. One of the nights that you accepted the bid, and I put this in my, my notes also, the deed. There was some kind of regulation, but if he was over three hundred thousand, he had to jump through more hoops.
Yeah.
So we sat here and he said, okay, or I said, why don't you go under three hundred and I'll make up the difference. Which he agreed to. So the total project was two ninety nine.
Did I give you access to the Town Council drive that I, that I created under our account? Because I've got all those documents parked there.
Okay, so where are the originals? Do you believe that they're here in this building?
I have no idea who held on to originals. I did not.
I have, so my question is, is that if we have a contract with Biddle, we only have to hold payment for five days. So um there's a regulation that says that you have to have an invoice in your hand for five days before a check may be written, and that is a check in advance of a board meeting. So we, the reason that we can pay bills, um many of our bills in advance of a board meeting is because they fall under your ordinance, but state regulations require that at a minimum, we have an invoice in our hand for five calendar days, and that if we are releasing it in advance of a board meeting, so this would be a ch- a payment released in advance of your December meeting now, we would have to have a contract. So as long as we have that contract, those are the standard rules.
The document that I've got parked is pre-signatured, so there are no signatures on that particular document. So again, it must have been left with somebody or someone here, because I don't hold on to paper documents. Yeah, and I believe Kyle did as well, because again, the document that I'm looking at has all of those sign lines on it, and it was dated uh May thirteenth.
Go ahead and um make sure that I have the access to that. I'll talk to Suzie about that. We just need to know how much to pay from the Ready Grant. And then we also know that that thirty five thousand that came from the Community Foundation, that we can release that as well.
So based on what you've got here, Phil, in your letter, I see a two thousand dollar difference. The number that I show out of the Ready Grant that we owe Biddle is thirty three five sixty one, and the number that you've got here is thirty five five fifty six twenty one. So uh exactly.
I didn't keep track of the grant separate. I just did the whole project.
Okay, so I, I would assume that my number is correct here. Now, so here's the other thing that, Phil, we, we've talked about doing, and I think whether it's the three of us or three of us and you and Mark, I think we need to walk through the building and take a look at all of the details that either need to be finished up, buttoned up, or, or not, and then make sure that those are all completed before we close out the project and put a, put a bow on this. Well.
Your building, you're the town board.
Yeah, and that, that was our thought.
Turn it back to your question. Yeah, if I was involved in a couple of them, I wanted to get my pictures of them, like, and Joy, I'm sure Joyce has got their notes.
So actually, those notes, the reason I, I'm aware of this is because of the next meeting, Joyce read out her notes and she provided them to the board, and they're in the record.
But I, I will not sit here and say, I remember.
Alright.
What all this detail, this part, invoices, to my thought, as being a contractor, you know, building is built, it's free on it. He runs the bill, it gets paid, but I don't know.
Yeah, so I, I have not been, as I told Kurt, I have not meaningfully been involved in this since the night that the bids were opened, so I have just, just a very cursory knowledge of where things stand on this. So my apologies, but I'll be happy to get those documents, and then I have a feeling I need to tear this building apart and see if I can't find the records, because I don't know where they are.
And the need to send out with Jim, how detailed his invoices may be, I'm guessing some of his invoices he's got uh has dollars for installing records.
And, and there, out of all the invoices that he brought forward, there was one that was highly detailed, and, and that one was good. That showed all of the concrete purchases, so that was all there. There was also one that was brought forward from uh Bussy on site work, which it was at least from Bussy. It didn't have any detail of, you know, hours or labor or whatever, but it was at least an invoice. Everything else has just been an invoice from Jim, and sometimes there was a line item that said X, but, you know, even things like the HVAC, right? We don't have any record at this point of a furnace, an air conditioner, anything like that, so if we need to have service, have warranty on any of that, we got nothing. And I think that's a big part of all of that. Um throughout the process, the grant folks wanted photos, and the photos were somewhat evidence of what had been purchased. So I took pictures of, you know, stacks of lumber, stacks of drywall, and that was good for them, but again, when it's, when it's assets that we now need to take care of, we got nothing on it. I, I mean, I can take a look at each one of these invoices in detail, but, you know, there's uh, you know, there's all kinds of steps from each one of his subs that sometimes it's just a line item, right? So uh sometimes it's painting, or whatever the case might be. You know, it would be nice to at least see that invoice from that sub that shows what, what they brought forward, right?
Although not that much to be said either. I doubt it's just every painting for years, they just need an invoice of ninety five hundred thousand for that. For complete painting of the project. He doesn't tell you, he just stands down with the paint and drives it on.
And again, I'm not like the one that came from Bussy. I don't have a problem if it's just a invoice on Bussy's letterhead that says, you know, this was our charge, right? I think those are the kinds of things that the grant folks, as well as us, are gonna look at and go, okay, yep, that all matches up. This, this looks to be a good, solid, you know.
What about the other money? I mean, he's, he's got two or three invoices that are August, September.
Again, that, that thirty three five sixty one is what, or five fifty six is with that last payment, this should make him whole on the grant side.
Okay, so I'm still confused. So we have, we have eleven thousand something left in the grants.
Plus, we were sitting on twenty one from the overage, from that original check that came from the grant.
Okay, so there was a, a withholding of some kind?
There was a reduced invoice from FBI when the size of the building was shrunk. We, we brought forth the first original invoice before the building was shrunk. So we got a check for that full amount.
Okay.
When that wasn't the actual charge from FBI.
Okay.
And that was the twenty one thousand and, and such.
Twenty one eight seventy four. There's one of them that I recall, Bussy excavating fifteen thousand seven thirty eight, the cash concrete, eleven thousand two hundred twenty one. That one was turned in on August the fifth for twenty six thousand nine fifty nine.
So can I ask, where did the invoices go?
That's the old one, I'm sorry.
Are you?
Well, and, and see, that's, honestly, that's been a, a bit of the uh rub. I got most of them. Phil got a few of them.
Here's all the.
And then a couple actually got dropped off.
But add up to two thousand.
So they didn't all?
They weren't all channeled through a single.
No.
Okay, so in this stack, Phil, if I share this with Suzie Bash, she should be able to check off the ones that we've paid?
Well, not necessarily, because some of it, just like this last check, was thirty four thousand, thirty five thousand. We didn't have that. That went towards his final payment, forty So the foundation said completion of job contract is that much.
Okay.
But we only had the thirty four thirty five thousand in the foundation, so it's, it's eight thousand dollars short.
Okay. So, but what I need to do with Suzie is match up the invoices that have been paid by the town, and then.
Well, I don't think so. I think it's more on this list.
Okay. I will work with.
This is his check register.
Okay, where?
It's who he paid.
Okay, and does he indicate when he's been paid by us?
No.
Janet, I've got an Excel spreadsheet in that file folder that I just shared with you, that has all of this detail of every invoice that we've received and what checks have been cut against it. So it should be fairly self-explanatory, but if you get into it and need me to explain anything.
So.
I absolutely can, because I've got.
The dollars and cents are not necessarily gonna match up with the way he builds.
And I understand that. I, I just wanna figure out what we still, what we owe from the grants, so for us, we have to pull them apart and then find out what bills, so, but am I guessing this collection of invoices is our responsibility at some, either we have paid it or we need to pay it?
You need to pay it.
Okay, so if we have the money.
Right.
Okay. Alright, so my, my problem, Ford, is that I'm flying out tomorrow night. So um I will do my best to get this all to Suzie, and then I think um there will have to be a collaboration, and possibly.
So do you have a listing of what you have with the Biddle construction?
I believe.
It's all, it's all in this document, yeah.
So.
And how much was that?
Uh so far to Biddle Construction, we've paid out one fifty eight, five forty three, seventy one.
And is that ready, or is that ready and?
That's ready. I'm, I'm just looking at my ready bucket right now.
Not your Community Foundation?
No, because in my accounting, I broke those out in separate buckets, because again, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna combine the Ready Grant funds with Montgomery County Community Foundation funds. Uh, we can't, right?
No, you cannot.
We start doing that, and we gotta run this.
Apparently, we gotta miss. This is sixty four thousand. He was needing money for his subs. This first invoice is sixty four one eighty six, all came from the, from the foundation.
And I've got that accounted.
Yeah, I remember that one.
That was the down payment on electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and I think that's full payment on concrete for that. I'm not sure.
So.
Two, two, four, one, nine. So you need to add the one fifty four, whatever it was, in six weeks.
I believe that Suzie will be here Monday next week.
Okay.
So pulling the claims and finding, matching things up should be possible.
Well, should I have him come here with his book of invoices to make copies of or what?
Let's let Kurt and Suzie talk about it first, and then when they arrange, when we know when Suzie's coming, we don't wanna give it. I don't know what date, so it just depends on her assignments next week, but I know she will be coming. Speaking of Suzie. Hang on. Are you watching our meeting? Can I put you on speaker? Hang on. Alright. Suzie watches our meetings.
Well, no, not normally, but I figured you might need some questions answered.
Bill?
Okay, so the money that we've gotten from the Community Foundation is spent. So we took in, and in Janice, it should be on the fund report, we took in, we've taken in sixty four thousand one hundred eighty six, and we spent that out. That, that's Park Pavilion money.
Right.
Does, does it agree with that?
That was early on, yes, I agree with that.
Okay, so we've also been taking in one eighty, two thousand seven seventy nine in the Ready Grant, and, and Kurt is right, we have twenty one thousand nine hundred ten dollars left over in the fund right now, plus, we have that. Plus, we have that 11, is it 682, Kurt, or 11,6862 left?
Yeah, so.
Between that 11 and the 21,900, that's what we have left right now. It's been without any more money coming from any.
Right, right. And I, and I've got the dollars and cents of that on the spreadsheet in front of me, Suzie.
Yeah, me too. I've been looking at the fund report. But, so if Phil has given us another, is there another check tonight?
On the 31st.
31st October from the community foundation. I brought a check in for 35,065 and 43 cents.
That would be a lot of fun for a grand. That would be, so she probably didn't get it put in until maybe, I don't know if it got to the bank account. Um, it's not in my October bank reconciliation, so.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, because I dropped it in that afternoon, so I'm sure nobody put it in the bank the same day.
Yeah, yeah, so it went in for November, and I think Kathy, I think we did look that one up. So then you have an invoice for that exact amount that needs paid as well?
It's not an exact amount. It's 43,000 something is what the invoice was for, but the community, community foundation only had 35. So I, I wrote in my letter, and I dropped off that check, and we still got 8,000, 8,500 short.
So are we going to take that out of the 21,910 that's sitting in there on the ready grant side?
Well, I don't know if we can do that, because those two don't, you know, we really don't want to co-mingle those two sides. So that's what we've got to figure out, because when I, when I look at my project totals and bring everything together, including the 11,000 that the town of Wingate spent with DES engineering, which again, in my mind, that's a part of the total project, I come up to a grand total of 302,479, 49, so that tells us that we're over budget.
So we also, Kurt did, and I actually went over this last night, but we also paid off two things last year. We paid the 1,500 to PMD.
For the over, for the, the image.
Yeah, and then 4,000 to MSS engineering.
Yeah, I didn't have that accounted for.
How much was, how much was MSS?
4,000.
4,000, and that was paid on December of last year. And then this year, we paid DES.
Out of our 16,000.
We paid 14,279, 70.
Okay, I'm, I'm only showing 11,000, so I must be missing something to DES.
Well, the community foundation might have 39,000.
They did.
We got, yeah, we got money from Montgomery County for that. So the 32,7970, and then we turned around and paid that out. But that came from, that went in, Janet, that's what we talked about, that actually went into Riverboat.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we paid, now we put it into general and paid it out of Riverboat, because it's all coming themselves. Uh, actually, we put it into Riverboat, and then we corrected that, because we'd originally put it into general, and we paid it out of general. So it was kind of a wash.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm saying though, Kurt, is you're, if Bevel is not going to have any invoice that matches up to the exact amount of what the grant was.
But the totals need, need to add up.
Well, the grand total is what I, I think we need to go.
Oh, yeah, I mean, obviously, the, the ready grant funds, uh, when you take a look at those, were 192,1. So, and again, this, this last payment, that matches up to the red cent. And then anything else out of the Montgomery County Community Foundation is basically outside of the grant. But then the question is, you know, you'll take a look at the entire project, and again, Suzie, you and I need to get the details of the DES, the MSS, and the other one to bring that together. So it looks like we're probably bringing this project to a total of somewhere around, probably somewhere in the 310 to 315 range.
Yeah, because we, because I have total of spending in my project, and I need to go back through this project. 19,779, 70, uh, was paid, and 158,579, 64,186, and then the 248,788, so I need to, I'm going to go back and actually just read, because we separated these out, so I'm going to go back and look at those again.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, if you look at a fund report, if you look at the fund report that I did, I think it's in the thing of October, it shows the 21,910 left over in the ready grant, and no money left over in the community foundation money, because as soon as we.
What we haven't seen.
Yes, other than that 30 something thousand that I have, that, I don't think we've received it in yet, but I'm sure it came to Kathy, so I'm just going to deposit it.
So are, are you going to be here next week at some point, Suzie?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure what day, because Jay's got to read the meters, and then I'll be at some point next week.
Well, why don't you, if you don't mind, just get in touch with me, because I think you and I need to sit down and make sure that we get everything, you know, to the red cent all put together. And then I think that's, you know, that's kind of where the rubber meets the road.
Okay.
Suzie, thank you for calling in.
Oh, you're welcome.
Phil, are, do you have any more questions for Suzie while we have her?
Not real.
Okay. Thank you, Suze.
All right, I'll talk to you later. Have a good one.
Thanks, Suzie. Thanks, Suzie.
Bye-bye. Even when she's not here, she's still here.
The beauty of a live stream, right?
Yes. Although she's at home in Kentucky, so.
Well, you know, the, the interwebs were everywhere.
Yeah.
Do we have any more on the park advisory board, since we're now waiting for Kurt and Suzie to get together next week?
I just want to point out that since the community, community foundation paid the 64,186, and then we wrote you a check.
For 35,000.
The community found, or the donations that amounted to 99,251,43.
So. That's, 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 that's huge.
I mean, we need to pay the guy.
So, yeah, 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 I mean, I, I totally agree. We just, we just have to make sure that we've got everything well accounted for, so we've got it, you know, to take forward.
At some point, you're going to have to talk to him, because I don't, I don't have his individual invoices for each thing that you're asking for.
Right.
So.
So if he could come, you and Suzie want to get together first, and then have him come in later and bring his book of business, so to speak, of his.
I wouldn't have any problem reaching out to Jim and doing that.
I'm sure you wouldn't. And I will make sure that Suzie tonight receives everything that you've brought me here tonight, so that she can match it up in advance of all.
Jim's in Florida today. He gets back tomorrow, so I'm sure I'll be getting in contact. I see him, but he didn't respond. But yes, you're saying I'm not going to walk out of there with a check?
You're not. Because the girl who has the checks is not here.
Well, actually, Kathy worked the 64,000. I dropped off her, she didn't have an extra check, and then she turned around and wrote you a check.
So I think she coordinated that with Suzie?
Probably.
Yeah.
Suzie uses that Town Hall of Wingate address, does she not?
She uses both.
Okay, so I'm giving her access to this folder at this point as well.
Okay.
Because I, I've got one with your name, but I don't have one with her name.
Right. So she and I are sharing that, the Wingate utilities. I occasionally check the Janet, but I expected, I kind of expect you to give that away.
Yeah, because, and, and again, at some point, I've got to get that.
I know.
With Cheyenne, get that all squared away, but that was a high priority.
Yeah, it's okay.
Do you have anything else on this?
Well, I, I do want to point out that there were some change orders, not official change orders, but if you look on that sheet of his, it's got the check register. I tried to highlight the items that went, that were changes made on the fly. So like the, Mark can talk to this, about the positioning of the restrooms. Originally, in FBI's drawings, they had the restrooms all on the east side with doors entering from the east side.
Right.
And you guys went south mark, and saw something at the south mark with an overhead door. So we added an overhead door to the west side, and then we had to put commercial doors on the inside to access the restrooms. So, so some of those costs weren't in the original bid, but, I mean, he's still abiding by the 299 number, even though we spent 300.3 thousand.
So the other thing too, Phil, and I don't know if you saw this one, it was only sent to me, but there was an invoice that came in, uh, 29th of October for finance charges.
Well, like I said, he's frustrated.
Oh, I, I, I get it, but, you know, we've got to get this all buttoned up, but I just don't see us, you know, covering finance charges to the tune of $1,200 as well.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you had.
So the sooner you get it figured out, better. What day did you say Suzie was coming?
She, she did not say, but she's going to coordinate that with Jay as soon as we know. Um, I'm, Kurt will reach out to you.
I will say, and I think I noted it on the ticket, but I guess, Bussy gave a bid of $10,000 to finish putting dirt around the edges, and also moving the rim. See, that's the only bill that Bill asked me to pay. But it's, it's in that total, 40, that last invoice, 47,500.
Okay, that's the grading?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I saw someplace where somebody said that the area had to be graded, so, okay. Occasionally, I do catch things. Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Town maintenance, Cheyenne Devoe.
Oh, I got a whole report. So Jay called the building department today about the new building, and he's waiting for a call back. Um, there's a storm drain issue on Main Cross Street that needs to be taken care of this winter. We can address it sometime at this point this winter. Um, he, we're currently working with the state to get the speed signs done under the police department, so it cuts out some of the red tape and speeds the process a little further along faster. Um, and then I'm also checking the sta, let me rephrase that. We're checking the status of where the resident on Main Cross Street was in the meter pit. Are you guys going to do anything about that, or?
Yeah, you're supposed to send them a bill, and the bill asks for it.
Okay.
I think. That was discussed at our last meeting. Um, if you look at your minutes.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I.
I know, I know. I know. Okay.
We talked about it, I remember that, because we talked about the penalty for.
Right, and the new ordinance, the ordinance book, once that comes in and we do the codification, um, it's under the residence at 205 South Main Cross, is that the right address?
Yep.
Um, had a water leak and accessed the meter pit, damaging the valve. Jay will bill the town for the repairs that should be passed along to the residents.
And we will pass along the repairs on their water bill.
Right. Versus, versus Bussy billing them correct, directly.
So Bussy should bill us.
Yes.
The bill has already been sent.
Okay, so was it specifically called out that it was for that bit?
On the bill, it has, I can tell you.
And then we in turn add that fee to their bill.
On the bill, it says repair meter shut-off valve at 205 South Main Cross Street.
Okay. Since Suzie's watching, hopefully she'll catch that. Make sure you text her.
I mean, she can't give us a thumbs up or anything, because I've turned everything off.
So, yeah.
But yes.
But I didn't know, I guess what Jay's asking is if you guys are going to do anything else besides making them pay, because technically, it's against the law for them to be in the meter pit.
Yes, it is, and we discussed that in our codification, because we had another individual that was in the pit that we went after with, um, legal action, so.
Do you want?
We went after the wrong guy. We went after the wrong guy on that one.
We did, okay? Lessons learned.
Yeah.
So do we want to impose any additional penalties or enforce our code?
So I think that if, what Cheyenne has said is that this would be a criminal, um, so, or, our, so if there's a state law that prohibits someone from getting into a meter pit and messing with our equipment, there's a state law, then we could have Jared write the month. Your new code book, which has not been, so the recodification includes an ordinance with penalties and fines for tampering. However, that has not been.
Published, so therefore it's not enforced for this time.
Right. So even when we get it, we still have to adopt an ordinance.
Yes.
And then we have to advertise the fees and fines, so, um.
But are we in violation of state law? Not us, but the.
We're not, but are they? So that's a, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
I understand getting in there, breaking something, intentionally or accidentally, but if you can't get a hold of somebody, shut it off, and you've got severe water damage. And your easiest access to that valve in the pit, how long are you supposed to wait?
In this case, he had already.
And I'm not saying I would have, I'm just hypothetically.
Mark, in this particular case, he had already called Jay. Jay was on his way there. He didn't wait, and he actually broke the valve, which made the leak worse. So in this particular circumstance, it actually, the town was responding. Am I correct? This is, that was the, and he just didn't want to wait for the, the town.
Right, Jay was basically in route, right?
Yeah.
And more or less.
He was on his way.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'll be honest, pre, even pre-Jay, I'd shut more than half, almost shut more than half. But you're really good for the damage.
And, and you're not the only one, Mark, but whether it was, whether it's Jay, and I've got an open relationship with Jay, but again, if I break something and Jay says, go ahead, guess what, I'm paying for it. And did the same thing with the gentleman prior to Jay. He was a good guy, and he understood that I had a little knowledge of what I was doing, so, yeah, go ahead and shut it off, okay. But again, even if, even if somebody has that kind of working relationship with our town people, hey, guess what? Even if those people crank it and break it, you're still responsible.
I think Mark's point is, though, do you really want to pursue the legal action with somebody? If you're going to belly in the parks, it's bad enough.
I guess the.
In this case, it was, he was impatient, wasn't willing to wait 10 minutes or 15 minutes for Jay to get there. Jay told him, I'm in route, I'll be here in a few minutes, and he went ahead and did it on his own.
So may I, it's my thinking that if we send him a bill and he pays it willingly, and it, it just goes to bed, but if he does not, then maybe there's something else.
If he pays the bill and takes care of the damages, I'm good with it. We don't need to go any further, but if he doesn't, then we'll have to pursue other acting.
And I think that's where our code for the tampering kind of.
Yeah.
Comes into play, once it's enforceable, right?
In the future.
Yeah, yeah.
But that is an excellent point. I mean, if, sometimes we break out.
Long way.
Been there.
When Raymond was here, in the weather, sent everybody in town, uh, in Miami, it was a $500 fine if you got in the meter pit and messed with the, you know, the valves. Because I just asked Raymond about that maybe a month ago, and he said he remembered it, but he couldn't remember it flatly, like I said, but there was a $500 fine for getting in the meter. Which, one way I can understand that, but another way, if you got a three-quarter inch pipe, unless you're in your house and blowing water everywhere, that's gonna do thousands of dollars damage, what do you wanna do?
Then I think you gotta watch where you draw line and get him in the pit. Versus getting in there and actually messing with it. You got a leak in your house, and you're trying to dress it, you're looking at the camera, you're watching. I'm taking a picture of bringing in the meter and letting it sit for an hour, sort of looking off in the house. And making sure, trying to diagnose my issue. I've had to do that before.
That's, and you're not tampering with anything, you're watching and in diagnosing. Where a lot of this is driven from is we have a resident in town who owns a business, who has tampered with the meter numerous times. And that's where legal action has been required to take place to stop that behavior. The latest one is he buried the meter pit. Yeah, so, but, anything else on your report?
I got one more thing.
Okay.
Um, so a couple of months ago, Jay talked about new street signs for the town.
Street signs, right?
Yes. So it's gonna be twenty-five hundred dollars for labor to install the street signs. And the reason why that is, is because we're gonna use the back, so we avoid hitting any utilities instead of digging. Cause there are some spots where there are a bunch of utilities right there. And they'll use stone after the poster put in to make sure everything's all in good shape.
Okay.
And, go ahead.
So roughly, it's going to be a seventy-five hundred dollar project.
Pretty much, yeah.
And that's for the whole town.
That is.
And that's, that's the whole thing.
Yes. Because.
And that was the blue and white?
Yes, the wing gate, blue and white.
Yeah.
Yes.
It said seventy-five hundred?
Because he told you guys the pricing at the meeting that he talked about it.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, it was like forty-nine, fifty.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna rough, rough around seventy-five hundred, so.
Okay.
And at the last meeting, you had indicated that you wanted to pursue that.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
We did the thing for it, right? Or we had the money for it?
I just wanted, I'm sure we do.
That was for replacing all of it?
Yes, that's to replace.
All of them, yeah. And it'd be the new reflective and all that.
We have some money in um LRS. We have a little bit of money left in MVH operating supplies, I think we're fine. Yeah.
Need a motion?
That'd be great.
I still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Who seconded that?
Andrew made a motion. I heard Kurt seconded.
Oh.
Yeah.
It was backwards.
Okay.
Andrew. Kurt, hey, make fun of me.
Come on, Janet, pay attention.
I had some extra keys made for the building down here. Kyle's had copies made. I handed one out to Mark. Doug Slavens had one for the night of the trunk retreat, so he's got one. And I've got one for Tyler Wilson in my car, and if you don't want any of these people to have it, I can give them back.
Mark, I want you back.
And I've got one myself, so.
Yeah, no, you're good.
I don't have to have it, if you want.
No, you're fine.
And Biddle does not have one, somebody stole his uh key box.
I thought you were telling me that.
Why? He, he never found it.
Oh.
I think Jay's got one too.
You're asking the wrong girl.
Pretty sure he does.
Yeah, he should.
I'll go with yes for right now.
But anyway, Kyle and I thought maybe it'd be a good idea for Jared to have one of these.
You'll get one too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get one.
Additionally, we have one, so.
Yeah.
We don't have to use the master key.
Which we can take it off the old one, the old concession key or whatever, and put that one on there, so we have the tag.
That is all I have for my report.
Okay. Troy's not here, do we have any reports from him?
Uh, no, other than his concern about that IDEM um notification.
Okay.
Which is on your agenda.
Um, anything from Jared?
I didn't get anything from Jared today.
Okay.
He was in town today, I can say that.
I keep talking to Jared today about the dog back here. There's a loose dog.
Susan? Susan's dog?
I, it's a little white, it's a big white dog right here.
Oh, okay.
Next to it.
I got you.
I'm gonna do that dog thing. He turned his back on that dog, he had it. About to push it on the end of my building.
I don't know that it needs to be on the agenda for tonight, but I, and I mentioned something to both of these guys. I think at some point soon, we need to discuss and have some sort of a um ordinance on uncontained dogs. Uh, we had a dog.
Yeah, I thought we had an ordinance.
Yeah, there, there, there might be, we just need to, and, and again, maybe it's in the codification.
Yeah.
Well, we do have an ordinance for um controlling dogs. We also have the agreement with the um, I, it's not on your agenda tonight, they just gave us the renewal on their contract, so it's gonna be on your next agenda uh with the Animal Welfare League.
Right, right.
Yeah. On it, that's a waste of money.
Yeah. Yeah, but we'll get to that later.
So it'll be on your agenda at the next meeting.
Okay.
I mean, we've got, we've got all kinds, we've got, well, friendly neighbor dogs that, you know, came to our place, and my dogs were probably playing with them for two hours and they're having a good time, but luckily, I found the dogs home. But.
All right, let's move on, Darren, your up backs.
Good evening. All right, our report is pretty simple. Uh, we had, this is gonna be for the month of October. We had eighteen calls for service. Six of them fire related, thirteen were EMS related. Ten of which were in the Wingate addressing, three were in the Richmond addressing. We had five usual eight calls. We assisted Atticum, LeMont, Crawfordville Fire, Randolph Fire, which is Romney, and Madison Township, which is Linden. Total of calls per service in twenty twenty-five, we were at one hundred and sixty-two calls per service. Which.
That's thirty, forty up?
Uh, we're, we're pushing thirty to forty up from previous years.
Yeah.
The ones that we were assisting other departments on, um, you know, how dry it's been. That's really why we're at and don't help all these other departments. We've had a couple of other things, which the vast majority have been field fires that have been so out of control, it's taken, we can get around, maybe to uh maintain them or contain them, so. That's where we're at.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to old business, lien on Courting Hall, the old bank building.
So I provided a document that um was sent to me last week, like Friday, from Stu Oliver on um lien, filing lien. I need to make phone call to the treasurer and find out if the property was sold at tax sale, if it was not. Um, and Shiana is going to send me the outstanding invoices. Um, and I'll talk to Suz about what we paid for the cleanup and see if we can't get that filed. What I was going to do is ask Suzie to file this or to provide whatever Stu needs, so we can get it filed at least next week. Again, I'm, I'm leaving town, so I won't be available to come back and file. But it has to be recorded um with the county recorder.
So it didn't sell at a tax sale?
I don't know.
That you need to find out, okay.
I will make a call tomorrow.
If it did, we are daylight and a dollar short.
Yep.
And I'll just put this on record on the meeting that we had contacted Stu and told him about the tax sale, and so any lien that was not placed before that is on him. Supposedly, yeah, Phil had told me, and, and I, I wasn't aware, but Phil told me that uh one of the county officials made him aware of it, so that's how it came about. Because again, if we didn't have those connections, I don't know what we ever would've known. The date was supposed to have been October ninth.
So I will check on that tomorrow.
Okay. Um, insurance renewal update?
Um, it's done, so we uh completed our renewal on our general liability for townwide. And we also completed the cybersecurity, which is essentially required by the state now for municipalities. And our um cybersecurity policy requires that a town official actually have um a app on their phone to receive any notifications and/or to communicate any of them. Kyle has that, so we've completed both processes. We are, um, coverage has been found on both, um, paid on both. And we have downloaded the app, so right now we are fully compliant with our insurance company, so there's that.
Yeah, more apps. We just talked about the street signage.
Yep, yep.
We've already talked about replacement street signage, uh new business, IDEM notice of violation, agreed order for the town of Wingate.
So um I provided you with that, we actually received a certified mail version of that. Um, the deadline for us to respond is sixty days. We have to enter into the agreed entry. Um, I don't know that we have a choice. Um, Troy Ellis recommended one that we talk to HWC, the engineering firm who's been working on our, the master planning grant, one. And two, probably um have the agreement reviewed by an attorney. Um, I happen to work with an attorney who is in the midst of this very same kind of thing and has agreed to do the work for roughly what we would pay our local attorney. And I think that might be more efficient, so his name is.
One is done before the sixty days, correct?
Oh, yeah, so we will have to have either a, we may have to have a conversation, a special meeting between now and Christmas to resolve this, it would be specifically for this purpose. Um, but this will be on your agenda and we probably all need to be. Um, I would suggest each of you talk to Troy, and I will reach out to, Lee Robbins is the attorney, he's an attorney out of Greenwood. Um, and I'll provide him with a copy of that and get his um impressions as soon as possible.
Need a motion?
Um, yeah, I really would, um, to engage Lee Robbins to assist us with our response to IDEM.
I make a motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye. And where is he out of, you said?
Greenwood.
Okay.
He's with Barrett, uh Williams and Wiltkowski. Um, it's one of the oldest firms in Johnson County.
Okay. So we'll deal with that. Um, other business, water shut off date. As I was, have explained last month, at the, on the twenty-fifth, I was called by Jay. We had a resident here that was having trouble paying his water bill, and Jay shut him off for our policy. Um, and in conversations with this gentleman and Suzie, the um, when they receive their limited funding from the government, it sometimes doesn't quite match up with our date. So talking with Suzie, it doesn't make a difference if we move the date. And the thought here is if we can help out not only these folks, but some of the other folks in town that have limited income that comes from the government. Um, the thought process is, is rather than have the cutoff date, the twenty-fifth day of the month, we make it the fifth day of the following month. Money comes out around the first and the third, that gives them plenty of time to get it to us by the fifth. Any further discussion on this, gentlemen?
Uh, no, I feel like we're over.
I still move.
Move to the fifth.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You cut off date the fifth of the following month.
Um, I will draft up a new uh policy statement that we will share with our customers.
Good. And we can just put that out in the next bill, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, that was easy and quick. Customer ma- address mapping.
And again, I just wanted to at least get that out there, because I think maybe at the December meeting, we really need to take a look, and we, we talked about it a bit in October. But I think we really need to take a look at where the current Wingate boundaries are, and then take a look at what properties we have outside of those town, you know, proper boundaries, Bain Walker being one, and take a look at what we might do with any utility service on those properties to encourage some voluntary annexation.
I will put that on your December agenda.
We'll take that on December.
So um if Kurt, I don't know if we'd have time, but the mapping office at Montgomery County, um, I can't remember the guy's name, but he's quite skilled. Um, that might be a place to start if, if you had a few minutes, just to send him an email. I think his contact information is on our website under mapping.
I'll look it up, and if I can't find it, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay. Next item on other business, American Legal Codification.
Yes, so I've been calling and I haven't heard back from Marissa, she's been taking some time off. Um, but we haven't got it back yet, so I'm hoping we'll have it before the end of the year.
Okay. Master planning grant status update.
I don't have any updates right now, but we will be talking to HWC probably um by our December meeting because of the IDEM.
Yep. And the last item on other business is twenty twenty-six meeting dates.
And I provided, so unless, so I.
We're staying with the second Tuesday of the month, right?
Are we? So I went ahead and I prepped it as if there was no change, but if, so I did check, there are no holidays falling on any of these dates.
Like Veterans Day?
Yeah, like Veterans Day. I turned into the bag today, I was so annoyed, like, ah, anyway. But I did update the website, so it does say Veterans Day. Are you guys good with this?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Um, yeah, let's do it.
All in favor of next year's meeting dates?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any other public comments?
I know it's early yet to talk to us, but we haven't thought about, have we been planning as far as advertising on the website? Building buildings, people that might want it. Even if it's very low income, such a low cost, at least let people know they have the opportunity.
Well, something we could do.
Place the thought. You have to change the intention.
Well, add that to the list with all the other things we need to put on the website.
That's a good point, I don't know about insurance. Well, would it be a different, what's going on, first flight? You guys have to have, you're a model, and you have a bike. The ballers just have to have.
Church has when we've had events down there, so, I mean, everybody has, but the question is, with insurance, is that suitable? Hopefully it is.
How's New Richmond do, you know, insurance wise, or anything like that?
No idea.
No.
I could say the merchants, which is actually a private entity in Wayne Town. Um, they, it's in our insurance coverage, that it, you know, that kinda came about. You pay, you're paid $300 a year, and that way, if Andrew and his family weren't in the building, they don't have to go out and get it, a writer from their insurance company. Not that it's difficult to do typically, it's just to make sure that if you spend something for a reunion or whatever, it's.
Yeah. It typically where, if, if, for people that are gonna have, like, a family reunion or a small party, family gathering type of thing. That sort of thing, um, you know, a special event, that's gonna fall under our general policy. Where it gets tricky is when we have the public out for the, the Sweet Corn Festival or baseball there every weekend. That's, that's where, you know, those types of events that draw. Yeah.
It's something you may have to, with number two, to do.
But that's, that's something that the additional coverage is required.
We started running into the, come up with the set of rules for cleanup, time to get it, time to get the heat back, alcohol policy, violation policy, like.
Oh, yeah.
Went through all this stuff.
Well, and another thing.
Once you get it all down, it's not too bad, right?
Another thing that we might consider, and I'm just throwing this out here, is a reduced rate for anyone who is a Wingate resident for any usage. So in other words, if we've got somebody from outside another town that wants to use it, the rate might be a little higher, but if we've got somebody that's a part of that group that's in town, and they're willing to be that responsible party, then maybe there's a slightly reduced rate. I, I, I don't know. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that helps or not.
Places are stocking wood, ready, their facilities then are coming online. Wayne Town Fire, for example, they don't make their space out anymore. Is it, and, but they're, cleaning policies, violation policies, they're only as good as tracking down people after the fact. Yeah, enough to take the lock, the paint, and birthday sparkles in the carpet, and stuff this and that.
All right.
Yeah. So that'd be considered.
Probably worth having a discussion with some of those folks about, too, right?
Ah.
Probably worth having a discussion with some of those folks about, too, so.
Yeah. All right, well, if there's no further comments, I assume that we adjourn the meeting. Twelve after seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wait.
Adjourned at seven?
Twelve.
Twelve? Good job. In a long time.
Stream has ended.